Maybe till tonight for safety sake. In beautiful King William County. Chris.
Mr. Miskowski?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Chairman Hodges?
Here. All right, can I ask you please stand for a moment as I will follow by our pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, have you reviewed the meeting agenda and heard any changes or an adoption? Mr. Chairman, if we adopt the agenda as presented at our place.
Second.
Chris.
Mr. Greenwood?
I'm not sure, since we didn't edit the date, I don't know.
It's been edited.
It has, yeah, oh, it's now, huh, okay, no, it's been edited, yep, aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye.
All right, next period will be a citizen's comment period. Chris, will you read? Do you have that? You have a period of three minutes? On any non-public hearing matter?
Um, this is for the citizens' comment period, not the public hearing matters. And let's see. It's the policy of the board that its meetings be conducted with the highest degree of order and decorum. The board's integrity and dignity will be established and maintained at all times during the conduct of public business, and the board will permit no behavior which is not in keeping with this policy. The soliciting of funds from meeting attendees, the use of threatening or profane language, the failure to comply with time limits, violation of board rules, or other forms of disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. The chair will maintain proper order at all times during all meetings of the board and shall affect the removal from any meeting of any person guilty of improper conduct if the offending party fails or refuses to cease such conduct. Speakers wishing to address the board shall clearly state their name and district of residence. All comments should be addressed to the chair. You can only address those matters that the board actually has authority over that are not on the agenda for a public hearing today. Speakers are allowed one opportunity of three minutes, and you may not yield any portion of your time to another. There should be no political campaigning, advertising of goods and services, or the like. No speakers to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board of supervisors, county employees, or officials, or any other person. Use abusive language, discuss matters outside the purview of the board, or publicly discuss matters the board has solely considered in a closed meeting. Clearly state your position, give the facts to substantiate your position, and state the concerns you wish the board of supervisors to consider. If you had a, if you have a written statement, handout, or other supporting material, hand it to the clerk. Do not hand materials to individual supervisors. Did everybody get a chance to sign up to sign up? Bertie Bosenberg?
Bertie Bosenberg of the 3rd District. Uh, Mr. Chairman and supervisors, I know you're going to be tired of hearing from me and seeing me, but I don't see much happening, so I am once again in front of you requesting that you, as our supervisors who were voted into your positions, to represent the 16,000 members of our community, please relocate the sexually explicit books out of our libraries and from their shelves. These inappropriate books are not for children ages five to 16, or even beyond that. They should be reading Dick and Jane, Seabiscuit, How to Ride a Bike, Grow a Gardener, even enjoy their youth. All children enjoy pretending that they can be dogs, cats, firemen, police, nurses, doctors, teachers, or anything, but they are a boy or a girl until they are old enough to make this decision on their own. That means over the age of reason. Let our children grow up the way we did. If you feel we are a bunch of nitpicky old farts, well, you're wrong. I'm going to continue to show up and repeat myself until you get off your thrones, and please take action to relocate these books either to a separate location, an area behind the librarians where the children need to get a parent's to sign if in fact they want to check these inappropriate books out. Mr. Shepley and his inappropriate books are going to be finding out that we do not want them in our libraries, and his actions have spoken much louder than his words if he can't come up with a solution for this small problem that we're requesting. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
And if you guys would speak up, please, when you're addressing things as we're sitting out there, I would love to hear your comments on these things instead.
We, we can't comment during a public comment period. That's we don't make y'all's comment. We, we can do it at the very end when the supervisor makes their, that's why I don't say anything. It's not, we're not responding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Landrum with District 5. I'm here once again to address the issue of sexually explicit material in the Pamunkey Regional Library System and the mismanagement of taxpaying dollars by funding this out-of-control system. First, to address the expense to taxpayers. Yesterday, Tom Shepley, the director of PRL, was granted a 7% increase in salary thanks to the yay votes of our King William representatives, Mr. Edwards and Ms. Shipman. He will now make $164,000. Meanwhile, the hard-working county employees of King William will only receive up to a 5% raise this year, including public safety, who actually placed their lives on the line. Does that seem reasonable or equitable? Now to address the material found in our libraries. In March, the PRL Board voted not to provide protection to minors from sexually explicit material. Two weeks ago, our own King William representatives, Mr. Edwards and Ms. Shipman, again, confirmed this decision along with the executive committee. Several King William citizens pleaded to this board in March for attention to this matter. However, the board of supervisors forged ahead and approved the proposed 2024 budget for PRL. Because of this board's inaction to protect minors, I brought examples of sexually explicit material that is accessible to minors in our libraries. Here they are. Do you approve of this material in our libraries? Would you allow your children to take this material home for your family to view? I'm a mother of three and grandmother and have been on the front lines raising my children. These materials found in our libraries only serve to sexualize and to grim our children. There is a diabolical reason that they are created in cartoon fashion. It is to appeal to juveniles. Why are Playboy or Hustler in libraries? Please tell me, what's the difference? Why are our taxpaying dollars supporting a renegade library system hell-bent on defiling our children? Why are porn magazines for adults censored in our libraries, but not these materials? It is us mothers who are trying to serve as the last line of defense between the flood of illicit materials you're allowing to be pushed on minors by funding the library system. I'm asking every single man that sits on this board to get engaged in the fight to protect them. King and Queen is pulled out of PRL, Goochlin supervises, they're engaged. Hanover County Admin attends the board meetings. Where is King William County on this issue? You are becoming co-conspirators with those defiling our children by financing PRL. Your silence and inaction means you're complicit, and it's speaking volumes. I would like to request that King William frees public funding of PRL until it cleans up its act, as Warren County, Virginia did. Mr. Shepley said these two were, were educational material.
I'm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a packet?
Get us to, yeah.
Can I have one for?
I saw one or two come in. Anyone else that would like to participate in the public comment? If not, I will close the public comment period. Gentlemen, we have a consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, it's a fairly excited.
With like, in saying that, I guess all the dates are red on adoptions and everything, it being not to 26, but to 29, okay. I, I know, I understand.
But I did change them all, yes.
All right. I have a second there.
My second.
Chris.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye.
Right. Ms. Bram, are you gonna present anything on this?
Yes.
All right, the next item is a public hearing, uh, on ordinance 06-23 zoning request Z012023, Kennington Age Restricted Carriage Home.
So tonight, uh, we had two public hearings. We still have them, um, for rezoning from a B2 toward R1 on a portion of property located on Kennington Parkway South. It's on the left side across from the clubhouse and the pool. They were going to keep the front portion of business, but the back portion, they were requesting rezoning to R1. Um, and they have a request for CUP in order to put 30 age-restricted carriage homes in that location. Uh, this did go to the Planning Commission on June 6th. Um, they voted to approve the rezoning and the CUP with several conditions. One of the conditions was to hold a public hearing, um, on, to review and approve, or recommend approval of the preliminary site plan. Uh, we have a site plan now and plays which you should have copies of tonight. The Planning Commission has not had a chance to take a look at that. Um, so it does need to go back to the Planning Commission. Uh, so Mr. Rogers with the Kennington Place, he sent a letter, um, to recommend that the case be heard tonight, but defer action to the Planning Commission to give them the opportunity to review the preliminary site plan attached with the CUP application. Um, I don't know if you've got a copy of the letter or not, but, um, he said that today. Um, in doing so, it would go back to the Planning Commission on August 1st and then back to the board on August 28th.
We first got this, and I understand February, correct?
Let me see what the date is. Uh, we got the applications May 2nd.
Okay, I thought it was later.
I thought it said, uh, I guess it says Z123. I don't, I don't know what that date would be.
That would be the first application that we've gotten this year. So.
Okay, and this is my understanding, your recommendation?
To defer it.
Is to have the public hearing, but to send it back.
Have the public hearing, but then defer it back to the planning.
Nothing dealing with the ordinance or anything tonight?
No.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Um, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Uh, they did submit, uh, proppers. There were several, uh, four proppers. Um, and I'll try to, we, uh, they have a conceptual plan. Um, so they want to develop the property, um, in conformity with the conceptual plan. They have the age restriction, uh, for 55 and older. Uh, they have recreational amenities as shown on the concept plan, um, that will be constructed at the expense of the property owner and the architectural treatment of the carriage home sites, which we do have elevations, um, in your package. And this actually, this was an, this is an, of course, you know, it's an existing subdivision. Um, it started in 2003, uh, 2003, 2004. Um, and they amended some proppers in '08. Uh, they went back and they made some changes in 2017. Um, and they're back again to, uh, change 9.9 acres to, to the R1 so they can request the CUP approval.
Anybody here? Hold it?
Thank you.
And now, if anyone would like to come forward on the public hearing, we have three minutes. Now, I understand the owners are not here, Chris. See, no one come forward in the last chance, I will close that public hearing. And we're sending this back.
Correct. Does that need to be done by motion, guys, or is it? Okay, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I can motion that we, uh, follow the advice of, uh, Mr. Graham, refer this back to the planning commission for another public hearing to take place in August.
Say, yeah.
Any further? Chris?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye.
Do, do we understand that motion to be omnibus, or do we need a separate motion to refer each item, Andrew?
I, I understood that the, uh, one of the stories zoning had been announced, and I, we could take up the resolution on the CUP 3 place. I think just bring it up and defer it. I don't think that this public hearing we advertised for that is there for, is there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Well, then I think we can go to the public hearing on that one.
On the resolution only, correct. All right, any, anyone at this point would like to come forward, uh, for their public hearing on resolution 23-50? We need no more than four. I will close that here.
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, I've requested that the, uh, Planning Commission take a look at this ordinance again. I think it's, it's not business-friendly whatsoever. Uh, you know, this is going to be another two months. I don't think we should have received it to begin with until we had a, uh, an approved site plan. Uh, hopefully, hopefully, it will be the sentiment of the board to, to have the planning commission look at this ordinance again. You know, it could have been, rather than the individual owning this property, it could have been, say, a business that had a piece of property on the contract, and they could have, you know, usually it's a contingency in the contract, as it was with Tiger Cat. Uh, they didn't own that. You know, they could have walked away from that. We could have lost the business. So I just don't think it's business-friendly. Uh, and hopefully the board will support the planning commission taking a look at that ordinance and see if we can do something a little bit better.
But a note with that, we did not lose that.
No, 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 we didn't, but you know, that could have.
Make sure they know.
Yeah, that could easily happen, though. When somebody's on the contract with a contingency, the time could run out on the contract, and in the meantime, they may find, it's also usually attached with a feasibility study. They could easily walk away if they found something better, maybe in a different location, not in Kent County at all. But that's my only concern with this, is Britain.
Yeah, I, I'd agree, and I'd add to it that, you know, this instance wasn't necessarily a, a failure of the ordinance, not so much as it was a failure in, you know, in administering the ordinance, and we need to be more involved. You know, the application wasn't, they, they followed the application, did everything right. So, yeah, I'm disappointed with that, too. So we need to do better with that. And we are going to bring it up at our next planning commission, so. But since that is an ordinance change, it will have to have the public hearing for that as well, and come back again, so.
When is that scheduled?
Uh, probably the next month. July or, uh, Sherry, you said you were going to try to get on for July, right?
We now have a, we have a large July 11th meeting. We have a whole session that will, uh, with the board and the planning commission to go over, uh, what's the thing?
The ones.
And we need a motion.
Motion that we report. No, I thought that was submitted in a second.
All right. Chris?
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye.
New business six-month work plan, Mr. Henskrup.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. With another budget year just a couple days away, uh, I propose to introduce to you tonight the six-month work plan on behalf of the administration. As you know, uh, we started this model shortly after I arrived in, uh, King William, and I believe it is really working successfully for staff and by staff. I would point to a memorandum, uh, that we always open, uh, each, uh, presentation to you every six months, and you will see the scorecard in which the various departments operated under the previous, uh, six-month period. And then, uh, it lists that there are 159 goals that are contained within this document uh, that we will be striving to achieve between now and December the 31st. Um, staff is working hard. I think they're prioritizing. We're trying to follow, uh, what you are recommending to your policy and what long-range planning that has taken place within the county, uh, in various instances. And, and I will be addressing another of those items in just a moment. Um, if you have any questions, uh, we can discuss some of them this evening or individually, if you want to call and, uh, make some recommendations. We know during a six-month period, things can be added, things can be dropped off, but in the end, we, we look for efficiencies, we look for, we look for ways to, uh, to advance the, the government and its operations.
In that?
Yes, sir.
Looking at facilities and maintenance, their list is much greater, and are they rated on how much of that they can?
Yes.
Complete versus one, it might have five.
I think Mr. Chairman, what, uh, and Mr. Hudgens oversees that, that department, I, what we're trying to do is to, uh, combine and not have them have as many items to do in a way that, uh, their score would not be affected if they don't get one portion done, but they get another portion done. And I, I think we, we were better at that this time than we were the previous, uh, the previous six months. And, and with a new director coming on board, I think we're going to be even better that way.
But the previous one also had that list about, not, not this many, but a lot more than the others.
Absolutely, that's right. I think if you, you notice that we have combined some of those and, and getting some things accomplished, we might not have as long of a list as well.
Mr. Henskrup, Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, I assume that a four, a score of four is, they meet, they, they met everything.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I want to congratulate Animal Services and Social Services for achieving their goal. Uh, and it, the other question would be, it seems like some of these, they have no rating at all, like Parks and Rec, or? Am I, am I mistaken?
They're 3.8.
Yeah, if you look at the score, the departments that achieve that score are, are right beside it. So information technology and Parks and Recreation were at 3.8. They just narrowly missed, uh.
Yeah, I was, I was going to write them, probably myself.
Sure, sure. And then you just go down, uh, based on the score, there are various departments attached to it. So, again, we look forward to working with you over this period, and if you have any questions about this, we're happy to. There's no action that's necessary. Mr. Chairman, this is administration to you. Uh, but, uh, you'll see many of these things over the next six months.
Any other questions? All right, we're up.
Chairman Hodges, we, we missed, um, item 10A, which was Resolution 2351, amendment to the King William County Fiscal Year 2023 budget with Ms. Longest.
Did I miss that?
Okay, I don't have that. It's not online.
It's there?
So if that's where, uh, so it was. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I've got, I've got it online.
Yeah, and it had been, um, emailed out as well.
I, I printed this.
Oh, okay, okay.
Ms. Brandt sent the email. I printed the new agenda.
Well, I will tell you that I printed it, it's out right now, so.
True. Um, you want to return to that, uh, Mr.?
I can, if somebody has got a copy of it, they can just.
Right, so, Chairman, what we missed was Resolution 2351, which is an amendment to the, uh, King William County Fiscal Year 2023 Budget for Quinton Elementary School, EFIS and Fetter System Project with bits of funding, and we haven't as long as here to present all the comments.
And we had the footage, right?
Yeah.
That's what it's really, that's what the handout was.
Good evening. Good evening.
Consultant to develop a master plan for the government complex. This idea has long been planned for, but it and has most recently come to light when it was identified in the Comprehensive Plan Blueprint twenty-fourty-one. Absent of a downtown area for King William proper, the expanded use of the forty acres around the complex would tie the areas together, beginning with our, what we know as the new courthouse area and extending all the way over to where social services and the post office are located. Hiring a consultant would help us to define the property use, the proper use of the property. County staff envisions a multi-use complex consisting of likely three to five future building, connecting paths, roads, parking, and landscape features. We already know the space in our courthouse and the administration building is rapidly shrinking. And it would make sense to combine social services, the Health Department in the one facility as well as we look for future needs. And as mentioned in the draft of the RFP, which is in your packets, the project would include site and design standards for multiple appropriate building, future uses of the property that could also include commercial space, protection of historic resources that include the old courthouse. And that would include collaboration with the Architectural Review Board of the county. We would also want to make use of multiple green spaces to hold public events. And then what maybe one of the most important areas is it would help us to project cost estimates in which we could plan for this activity over, over a period of years. Funding for this master plan would come from the Capital Improvement Fund. And we would bring back the the proposals for and the recommendation to engage when we got the the proper proposal to bring to you. This is just asking us for permission to seek engagement right now.
In that forty-two acres, is it any marshland, wetlands?
I think there's a little bit in there, Mr.
There's some low areas. We came up with that estimate as a this is the area we're looking at, which is everything from just the other side of the road here, where DSS is now, all the way across to into the new courthouse. So what is the best use of that space? That forty acres isn't about to be covered by things. It's where should we put things in that forty acres?
Good point. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft, I'm just curious. It looks like you highlighted an area that says forty-two point three seven acres, but it doesn't follow the boundary lines of any of these properties. Do the properties that these, this touches go all the way to the property line of each one of these? Or is it, are they cut off in these?
No, that is, that is purely a sketch to, this is the highlighted area that we think that buildings and this plan would.
Oh, okay. So that's, that is forty-two point three seven acres inside that yellow area that we own more.
We own.
Ah, okay, okay. That's what I was wondering. I thought, okay, that's fine. Thank you. And does it go down to the, the, not the pound, but the animal shelter?
It doesn't. It does not go that far. It goes, it goes to includes to all, all the land, just to the border of the new courthouse.
Okay. So when I'm looking at this, does it say that the county owns two hundred and fifty acres?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Will this affect anything to do with the diggings that they're doing now?
No, that's certainly what we want to preserve. And we would make sure that all those that are involved in that would, would certainly work with the consultant to provide and separate those those areas. Because that certainly any development of the, of the complex with a highlighted area would be what is already historic and in preservation. We just want to add other functioning government services to the area. And also, as I mentioned, the green space, I think is very important to make sure we have separation, but yet we're using all the spaces necessary for expansion. We know we're going to have to expand and get help and to do it properly. I think you're going to have to have professional advice to guide us in that area. And obviously, funding for, for any construction would come later on. But we know over the next period of years, we're going to have to be be looking for some sort of expansion.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Ashcraft, I'm glad that you mentioned social services and their need. Not long after I was sworn in, we purchased the building on three sixty that is now Parks and Rec. That was earmarked at the time for social services, and it is a need. I'm no longer on the Social Services Board, but I would encourage anybody that questions the need to go there and visit. You know, it is the Health Department in there and Social Services. Social Services alone has, I think, seventeen or eighteen employees.
That's right.
And they are very crowded and a lot of people seek those services. So yeah, I'm on board with this. Do you need, do you need a motion?
Yes. Does briefly scan this, but is there anything in this RFP that asks for this contractor, whoever was chosen to, to allow them a creative? Is there a creative boundary out there? Or are they going to come back with different proposals? What is your expectation?
Well, they'll be working within the forty acres. That's what we're establishing, and we certainly do have to do some.
Let me ask this other question first. Do we have anything that we can model from just to get an idea? Like New Kent, for example, there's a complex there, shops, restaurants, I believe.
Well, I don't know, and I don't know to what level the county government was involved in the development of that particular site. And that was a private development that they worked to make aesthetically, you know, work within.
Could we envision this to be a public-private relationship with a?
We understand the possibility of commercial. We're not looking at it from that standpoint. Quite frankly, we're looking at it from, from the needs of what our government is going to, is going to have. And I know small shops could certainly, and small professional, you know, offices, lawyers, obviously, close to courthouses and but that certainly, when they identify the buildable property, I think it would be up to the future planning of this board and even the Planning Commission to say this is a good place for a commercial, I don't know, really retail necessarily, but I think professional services certainly.
Right.
Mr. Moore.
I'm sorry.
I'll just wrap up the point about the New Kent thing. The one thing that commercial side of that part of it had gone forward, there's a lot of houses around the courthouse.
Yes.
But I think, Mr. Moore, I think it's what you were getting at. You're going to project what we're looking for, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
In the, what we're looking for in the overall development.
I'm just, I'm thinking about a destination, tourism destination, as well as office space and the growth, but along with the museum and the historical courthouse, just to have it as a tourism destination and while they're here is to offer them maybe something to eat or just hopefully, this, this, this contractor will come back with some vision, visionary ideas.
Right, and I think the Hill Group provided us with some ideas of how that type of thing could expand out. I think that's just, that's maybe a longer term, twenty-year vision. I think this is a shorter term. You know, probably the genesis of that starting to form here at the central, you know, place location, because we are at a room. I know we know that. We're at a room everywhere.
Would we consider this, consider this a five-year vision or a ten-year vision?
Well, I think obviously, we have a space problem with social services, as you just alluded. And to create a new building for them and the Health Department would allow us to utilize that facility in a smaller fashion and be able to move some people into that building. And then possibly those folks that are in the building that the County Connection has or Community Connection would, would move. So you have some moving parts once we have social services and the Health Department taking care of. Now, I'll have not been part of conversations, but I do understand there have been past conversations about the expansion within the courthouse. They're tight for space, and it could possibly even be leading to a, a new courtroom. I know juvenile domestic is always one that stands alone in many other counties. Maybe that's time that that might be one that we would build here, and that would free up court space in, you know, in the, in the current courthouse. That's, those are two, for me, that are immediately in the, in the back of, of the planning. And then other things that become, that become necessary priorities for the boards ahead of us, we would look at. But also, again, I think to connect, and all of you have seen college campuses and how they're connected, both with sidewalks and but yet there's still buildable spaces there where buildings exist. And I, I see that happening and unfolding as that's connected with where we are here. And it would just be one big complex to where you can walk and drive and and that kind of thing. I think it would, it's going to just open this area up in a positive way.
Yeah, we don't want to make, have to make individual, each time we come up with another building that we need to expand that we, well, that's the most convenient spot.
Right.
And then twenty years later, we've got a hot pot of things. We do want it to be more of a nice, complete design destination.
Cancel.
Integrate everything and make business more efficient.
If it be the, the board's desire, I would ask and recommend that you allow staff to proceed with the RFP for a master plan for the government complex.
Somebody, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next thing up, Chris, I think it's yours. King William County Logo and Design.
As we're moving forward to try to create more of an identity for our county, I'd like to open up to our citizens and others the the opportunity to tell us what they think a county logo might look like. We would not do away with our county crest. This would just be something in addition, kind of similar to how Hanover now has their Hanover with the tomato, and New Kent has theirs where it's got the little four blocks that kind of, it's more of a tourism thing. And like New Kent shows the types of tourism that are available there. And many counties have been doing that. It's, it's really more for branding and tourism. But we would never get rid of our county crest. It's just kind of a different purpose. And I think one of the best ways to determine what should a logo for this county look like is to open it up to citizens and say, give us your best ideas. It could be as simple as drawing it out on a piece of paper. We'd have to have it professionally rendered later. And then we could put it to a vote, or we could put it to a board vote. But we'd like to be able to start the contest pretty much now and have it ready that we could get a logo to kick off our rebrand of our website. We have a redesign. We get a pre-redesign every, I think it's two years through our web host. And rather than kind of redesigning it and then redesigning it again, we'd like to have the logo in mind when we go to create a new website. And some of the things that are going to come out of the website as well are going to hopefully be a county app. So that when you are on your phone, everything doesn't show up in a big long line when you go to look at calendar events and things like that. Ashland, the town of Ashland currently has an app. They use the same provider we do, so that. The town of Ashland currently has an app. They use the same provider we do, Civic Plus. Plus, um, if you look at, if you go to your. App Store and download theirs and take a look at it, it's very nice. And it really provides a lot of information for citizens, um even the ability to pay your bills through there. And, yeah, and that's something we would need to speak with the treasurer and others about how we would wanna integrate that. With the things that we have now. But I think we need to get ready for February when we're gonna have all these new people with the internet and. We wanna make sure that we're ready for them and we have information on our site.
Okay. You, you answered my number one concern was that we're not touching our crest.
No, we're not gonna touch the crest.
Yeah, I, I would suggest you make sure that that's upfront.
Mm-hmm.
When you solicit.
Yes.
I think it's a great idea. Hopefully, uh, some people will uh start using our site and become more active. More knowledgeable. And that's a good way to attract people, I think.
And one thing too that I, I wanna mention, and we're hoping to have this up before the next work session. Um, our website provider has now something that they are calling the Civic Plus Portal. And what that allows you to do as a citizen is you go in there and you create an account. And then you basically build your own. Dashboard or faceplate for the website. So you go in there and you say, this is what's important to me. So you'll, you could add a link to the calendar. You can add a link to. Hopefully, the live streaming. You can add a link to whatever it is that you're personally interested in. Um. And it still takes you to the information that's on our website. Uh, so it's not like you have to double update things. But I've seen some other. But I, I don't think it was another county that actually had it yet, because it's brand new. Um, but their knowledge base and it's really neat. And I actually did go and set myself up an account. Um, but that account, that dashboard that the citizens will be able to create. Will look just like everything else on our website. So it'll all be cohesive. And I'm really excited about that, because I, I really like that. It's hard to find stuff on websites when there's so much information. So that portal will allow people to um. Pick the parts that are important to them, put them all in one place and then they can click around.
Something like a widget.
Mm-hmm. But it really, when they log on, it's gonna look to them like it's, like it's a webpage. And it'll be their main page and they can, you know, click a link to get to the, to all of the rest of the county page. But if, if all you really care about is, you know, maybe the, the calendar and the agendas. You don't wanna have to click through a hundred other things to get to it. So this way you could make yourself some shortcuts and have your own personalized portal.
You're talking with Travis, not he dealing with any kind of issues.
I um, I have mentioned that we're working on it. So, but there's no IT issues because it's all through Civic Plus, which is who currently. Prop does our, the board portal that you all. Are struggling with and the civic clerk where we create the agendas and then the. They have so many different modules, Civic Engage, which is our website, Unicode, which is our online hosting. It's all through Civic Plus. And it's all web-based, so it doesn't um affect IT.
And listening to everyone, I think we have approval to grow together with them.
And you're all welcome to submit your ideas as well.
Next thing is administrative matters, County Administrative.
Mister Chairman, uh, just quickly, you have uh administration's report uh in your packet, but I wanted to touch on a couple of things. One, uh, on behalf of all the employees, we wanna thank you for allowing us to uh to celebrate Monday with our families. And since we brought the proposal a week or so back, uh, a number of localities and um. You know, cities and counties have, have went in that direction. So I think it's a, it's, it's a good thing and. Our, our circuit court is also uh, I just found out from Sheriff Walton that our circuit court is gonna be closed on Monday as well. So.
State never, never came.
Not to my knowledge. Have I seen a state announcement? No. So, so thank you very much for that. And we also want to offer a big congratulations to you and everyone that's involved in getting the uh. The VIPS, the transfer site, uh, the, the traffic pattern uh open. Uh, there's still a little work to be done on the other side, but generally it's uh, it's functioning. And uh. For, for what would be considered kind of a small area, there was a lot of work that had to go into that. We had some utility issues that we had to address and. And certainly just making sure that everything fit the right way and the containers and all would, would just be a good flow and. In the, in, in the end, we're hopeful that the, the traffic on thirty will not be stacked. Uh, it's hard to prevent it from being when people are coming before it opens. That seems to be the worst place, uh, but uh during the day. Hopefully, it'll, it'll go through where we won't have that issue. So.
There's only equipment in there.
I believe so, yes.
I've been through there twice and it's, it's a nice flow. I would, I would suggest we start thinking about signage. You kinda get there and you don't really know.
That, um, I don't know about signage posted, but that's one of the things that they had left to do.
Okay.
They were planning on having uh doing uh pavement painting and ceiling of the old asphalt. Uh, earlier this week on Monday, but then all the rain, they had to push it off. They're planning on doing that on uh July.
And otherwise, I'm looking forward to some public feedback. Hope it's mostly positive, of course.
Good. Uh, wanna remind everyone that uh our King William Farmers Market is the first and third Fridays of every month. So the next one will be on July the seventh. And uh, we expect more vendors since there's more produce. It'll be uh, uh, ready by then. And uh. Then West Point has its uh Farmer's Market every Saturday morning from eight to twelve with their pavilion. So we have plenty of opportunity for uh residents in all, in all points of the county. Uh, one item that I, that stunned me, and I put it that way in the report, is that our unemployment rate in King William County per April was two point three. That's, that's amazing. Um, I know it's hovered around two five, two six, two seven. Uh, at least in the last eighteen months, but it dropped to two point three. That means more people are working. Than probably ever before. And uh whether they're traveling outside of the county or they're finding jobs within the county. Uh, we have a work ethic in this, in this county that's incredible. And uh we should congratulate everyone. Two point three. That's uh, that's one of the lowest in the state. Field work is continuing on broadband. Uh, we hope to have an update from all points uh at your work session uh on uh July the tenth. Um, and we hope. Like everyone else does, that at some point there'll be a, a, a beginning of, of, to the home. Where it'll be hooked up and we have to can celebrate some uh, some things. It's been a long, it's been a long journey for everyone, for you. And I just hope that happens. And uh, the last thing I have, Mister Chairman, is that we did uh our water storage tank uh construction is uh. Uh, the first phase of that is to do the water line and we made an award to Fort Lyon for eight hundred fifty three thousand eight hundred dollars. To provide pipe for the project. And of course, the construction of the, of the tower will come later and we still have to have a bidding process. For that, but that's another achievement that this board can, you're looking. Futuristically, you're looking at, at what utilities need to be. And of course, water is a big part of that. So congratulations to you on that. The rest of my report is contained. There's letters, uh, memos from uh various departments and agencies. If you have any questions, we'll certainly uh do our best to.
Mister Ashcraft, if I may, I would like to welcome Mossy Harris aboard. Old friend.
Yes.
Glad to have you aboard.
Sure. Name is in the uh, the new hires.
Yeah, I swear. I forgot her name.
A good friend. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item I have is the Board of Supervisors comment. And, and it's Stephen. Yeah, that's good. I've seen this last time, I guess, still. Internet and we were referred to uh from Chris that uh we maybe need that we need to get to this website, but. I still haven't seen anything. I, I see Rapant Power and Dominion Electric putting a lot of line up and wrapping it around those. I think coal things, but I still don't know if they're gonna make it by February.
Well, kinda have to.
Now, I hope, but. And everybody have a happy fourth. This holiday weekend be safe out there. It's gonna be a lot of crazy people, so. More than, with fireworks, you know.
Um, just echoing Mister Greenwood's comments, everybody have a safe and happy uh Fourth of July. Um. You know, I, I just say, I'd love it if we, we would all put as much energy into trying to. Understand and love and support each other as we did in being suspicious and accused authority of each other. I think. Uh, this world would be a better place, wouldn't it?
First, uh, everybody have a safe and he- healthy Fourth of July. Uh, I wanna congratulate everybody on their signature drive. I know it's not easy getting those signatures. And uh, welcome the competition and look forward to having honest conversations with everybody. That's all.
Echo having a safe fourth for everyone. Um, I'd like to, um, many of you have probably seen the announcement that the federal government. allocated one point five billion to the state of Virginia for broadband access and expansion. Uh, we'd been working, Mister uh. What's your last name? Stephen, I've been working on this with uh DHCD, the state agency for some time now. This kind of threw us for a loop, actually. Uh, because we've been working to try and justify what we thought we needed as a state. And they just, somebody just arbitrarily gave us one point five billion. So we need to figure out what we're gonna do with it. We, of course, have plans to. Uh, bring broadband to everyone in the county of King William that wants it. So that, that piece is easy and settled. Uh, we're gonna look now and focus on post. That's uh. Terms such as digital literacy, liter- literacy, we. And uh, people that have never had internet to teach them what it is, how to use it. And get a quality of life that is much, much better for them. All of you that didn't have it, now have access, you can understand and hopefully. Uh, illustrate and communicate that to your, your, your parents, your grandparents, those that don't have access to broadband, what it can do for you. Uh, I'm gonna drop down to a, a, not quite a good subject. I want to know if these. These books that were illustrated tonight are in our libraries in King William.
Yes, they are. That I do know.
They are. Okay. Okay. And we'll, we'll be working, I, I hope as a board, we'll be working to come up with some plan. We cannot. The citizens that use the libraries that don't go and searching for pornographic material, want these libraries and need these libraries. So we as a board need to determine how we can better manage these, these. Things so that our children don't have access, but people that need the libraries get what they need as well. It's not gonna be easy, but to pull out is not the answer.
I look forward to that conversation too. I agree totally and I know I've already spoken, but hopefully we can have that conversation. And. Simply some of them just want the books segregated, so uh children can't now that access them. So. Anyway, that's all.
Spent too much.
No, not really. It's a very tough subject to deal with and I disagree with they being available, but. Talking to even Hannah was attorney. He says that if you move them and censorship. So I don't know. I, I'm just telling you what he, I see your head shaking. I'm just passing along the message. Uh. I, I don't know the answer like they, but we are, don't think we're not, we're just not commenting. Oh. Uh, but again, we, we are keeping a close eye on it and. Uh, hopefully we can do something to get rid of the uh. Or restrict them to the point where only not, not small children can get to them. Uh, have a safe and happy holiday. It's a little bit longer. And we appreciate the thanks from county employees that we gave them the Monday off, but. Uh, I thought that was a good idea. Didn't I quite compensate as much as the public sector, but so this is something we can add to that. And with that, uh, thank you, everybody. And if anybody leaves, uh, see you back here July eleventh and do I have a margin?
Chairman, Mister Chair, I move to convene a closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven eight three of the Code of Virginia regarding real property. Used for a public purpose specifically pertaining to the acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the whole.
Second.
Chris.
Mister Maureen.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Chairman.
Hi.
All right, folks. Be back in short. Hey folks, I call this board meeting back to order.
Mister Chair, I may re convene in an open session.
Chris.
Hi.
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 Chairman Hodgson.
Hi.
Mister Chair, that's our one. Second.
Chris.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Maureen.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodgson.
Hi. Mister Chairman, I'm leaving. We adjourned.
Second.
Chris.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Maureen.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodgson.
Hi. Good night.